Good evening, everybody. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the Daily City Council this Monday, September fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Would you please all rise to say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let me have a call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Canapa?
Here.
Mr. Gingona?
Here.
Mr. Torres?
Present.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present. All right, let me first make the general announcement. For those of you wishing to address the City Council on any item on the agenda or under public appearances, oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the council chamber and submit to a staff member as early in the meeting as possible. Let me go on to now to a presentation. We have a presentation proclaiming Phil Am History Month, presenting on behalf of the council, is Councilmember Mike Gingona, who will be presenting to Perla Ibarrientos. Please step forward, Ms. Ibarrientos.
I want to... All right. Eat my glasses. I'll say, this is a proclamation, and is a proclamation of Filipino-American History Month in Daly City for October twenty fifteen. And has a few whereas's, I won't mention a few of them. Whereas Filipino-Americans celebrate and share their culture and history each year at the Daly City Filipino-American History Month Celebration, this year the entire Daly City community is invited to celebrate Filipino-American history at the Cheli Event Center on Saturday, October tenth, two thousand and fifteen, from eleven o'clock to four P.M., a day filled with dance, music, crafts, fashion, and of course, Filipino cuisine. In addition to traditional elements of Filipino-American culture, the celebration well-featured Legions of Boom, a live demonstration from some of Daly City's pioneering DJs, including Shortcut and DJ Apollo. Daly City has the highest concentration of Filipino-Americans of any municipality in the United States. Filipino-Americans comprise thirty-five percent of the city's population. California's home to nearly half of the Filipino population in the United States, with more than one million four hundred seventy thousand Filipinos calling the Golden State home, according to the two thousand and ten census. And is the location of many historic Filipino communities, including those in Daly City, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Stockton, Vallejo, Delano, San Diego, Salinas, and among others. So now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Buena Ventura and all the council members, I would like to help us all proclaim October twenty fifteen as Filipino-American History Month in Daly City. And this is to Perla Ibarrientos. Perla?
(applause)
Yes, that way. Okay, and then put it this way. I've only done this a few times.
Evening.
Mayor Buena Ventura, members of the Daly City Council, and City Manager Pat Martel. I was just told tonight to accept this, so I'm very honored to accept on behalf of the Filipino Bayani Hands of Center and Filipino-American at large in Daly City. Thank you for doing this. This has been for how many years? Five years that you have been doing this. The community are very happy, and please, as you have heard, October tenth, be there. We have lots of food, remember that.
Lots of food.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Everybody's invited.
Got to be there.
Please, please.
All right, let me go on to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let me go on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let me go on to the consent agenda. Any items to be pulled?
Make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any objection, hearing none? All those items are now approved. All right, let me go on to item number twenty-one, which is the use permit for firearm repair and sales at seven-three-four-five Mission Street. Presenting on my staff is Mr. Matanga. Mr. Matanga.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and members of the City Council. As you may all recall, several weeks ago, on August tenth, Council continued the public hearing for this item, so as to provide Council Committee an opportunity to discuss the public noticing that was provided for the project, and also enough time to analyze the data for the project and its surrounding neighborhood. And since then, that has been provided. On the date of the hearing with Council Committee on August thirty-first, Council met with the applicant and staff, and directed staff to revise and clarify the crime data, and also directed staff to re-notice the item, so that it will be heard today. In essence, the applicant is applying for the permit to operate firearm sales and repair business along Mission Street in an existing commercial building, Zoned C1. According to our business license records, previously, the space was occupied by a spa and a massage business. The applicant is proposing operating hours between nine A.M. to five P.M., Mondays through Fridays, and ten A.M. to two P.M. on Saturdays. Customer parking for the project is along Mission Street. This is the project vicinity map depicting the surrounding land uses to the west of Mission Street and to the east of Mission Street. That's the zoning depicting the site location and the surrounding zoning within the project That's the project site depicting the buildings and the address, seventy-three forty-five. That's where the, if the project is approved, that's where the business will be occupying. This is the project floor plan showing the entry point on the upper portion of the floor plan diagram. Thank you. As you can see, right by the entrance, there is a camera focused on the entry point, and there is a secure display cabinet right in front as you enter the building, and every important component of the floor space is secured with a camera. These are the surrounding businesses within the project site. This is, this building is located in the south of the project site, and these are the surrounding businesses to the immediate north. There's a used car dealership immediately north of the project site. These are the businesses to the west of Mission Street. The applicant is proposing to maintain security plan as approved by the Chief of Police at all times, and he's also agreeing to operate the business as per condition of approval. And the applicant shall always operate the business as governed by the state and federal laws, and shall always maintain current permits and certifications as required by the state and federal government. This use permit is required to determine if sales and repair of firearms warranty a use permit. And the Council is also being asked to determine if reasonable safety precautions will be put in place upon the approval of this project. The Daly City Planning Commission recommends with a vote of five-zero that the Council do the following actions: Adopt the findings as outlined in the staff report; affirm the environmental assessment; approve the use permit, subject to the findings and conditions contained in this staff report. That concludes my presentation this evening. The applicant is here to entertain any questions the Council may have, and I'm also available.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matanga. I have close to around thirty speaker cards, so I'm going to suggest that we just go ahead and call those now, and then if we have questions, we can ask later. And I'm going to reserve Mr. Sedegren for last, so you can have the last word on the issue. Okay, so when I call up your name, you'll have two minutes to speak, so please keep it to two minutes. And also, you should know that if you had sent us a letter, we have, you know, obviously we have all the letters that you've sent, so you should know that we've received them and that we've read them, so if you don't think you need to say anything more than what your letter, of course, you are welcome to come up and say, you have every right to express yourself in the two-minute time period. All right, so the first person I'm going to call up is Mike Nguyen. Mike Nguyen, Mr. Nguyen, come on up.
My name is Mike Nguyen. Good evening, everyone. I want to speak in favor of the gun shop. I used to live in Orville, and there's a bunch of gun shops down there. When I moved to Daly City, there's not many available, and I'm a law-abiding citizen. It would be kind of nice to go to a gun shop, shop around, and have my gun repaired if there's any issues. So I just want to, it would be nice to have one down there, and I don't think we should have fought the gun shop for abiding by the laws, although many people have been killed due to gun violence. We can't fault the gun shop for following the rules. It's not their fault, so, you know, people who mishandle their guns or lose their guns, it's not the gun shop fault. You know, those people have to secure their guns more properly with lock boxes or whatever, but in regards to denying a permit to a gun shop, I don't think that's right for myself and many others who would like their services nearby instead of traveling to a different town or city. It also helps Daly City's revenue if I buy a gun shop here, you know, it helps the general fund, as opposed to going out to a different city, buying a gun over there, paying taxes to a different city. So I think it helps out Daly City and everybody like myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Lamont Bishop? Lamont, come on up.
Good evening, Lamont Bishop. I'm here on behalf of Senator Mark Leno to read a statement. It reads, Dear Mayor Buena Ventura and Councilmembers, I write to express my concern regarding the use permit for the firearm repair and sale shop at seventy-three forty-five Mission Street that you will be considering at your September fourteenth, two thousand and fifteenth City Council meeting. I share many concerns of community members regarding the permitting of a gun establishment in Daly City. I understand there may have been a lapse in diligent noticing to the affected community, and I think it benefits or respects their concerns if the City Council is giving this proposal further scrutiny. I urge you to give thoughtful consideration to the potential impacts a firearm repair and sale store would have on Daly City and the surrounding communities. Thank you for your promptation for this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Pamela Di Giovanni?
Is there any way we can amp that up a little higher? Good evening, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor. I'm here tonight to oppose the gun shop. I am not opposed to responsible gun ownership of those who can go to Dick's Sporting Goods and Big Five, and there is access to handguns over in Pacifica. And contrary to the applicant's report, there are three repairs that are really reputable, one in San Bruno, one in Redwood City, and also in San Carlos, and they're very reputable, and that a lot of people have been there for a long time, so there is access for that as well. So I don't think that it's a right for our community in our Mission Street corridor. We've had bank robberies, we've had barber shop robberies on that corridor, and many other concerns, and the Villa Fontana, the seniors and that are petrified. And after speaking to many of the residents, I'm sure you'll see that, so I oppose that. My friend was killed when he was fifteen years old. He was shot with automatic weapon delivering guns, when he was delivering his paychecks for his father. And I also had a gun pulled on me in Daly City last year with a guy brandishing a firearm. So it doesn't stop here, and there, we do have incidents here and on the school grounds. We've had several, which you'll hear later. Thank you very much. I oppose this. It's not the place for it, and the applicant has changed the story on the prior applicant, where he just used police officer, and now I see that he used S.F. State officer, which I don't understand why the story changed on one report before till now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Di Giovanni. Hanley Chan? Can we also get the lights turned back on? Hanley?
Good evening, Council, General Manager, and people in the audience. I'm supporting this gun shop. I'm a former law enforcement, a disabled American veteran, so, you know, I believe protection of my Second Amendment rights, and my fellow colleagues in here, that our veterans believe that, you know, we served, we sacrificed our lives to protect our amendment. And our Second Amendment is part of us, that's why we're Americans, and I'm proud to be American. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chan. Don? Okay. Dan Bond?
Del Bond.
Del Bond. Don Del Bond.
Good evening.
Good evening.
City Council, good to see you again. It was May twenty-sixth, the last time I stood up here, thanks to you. Pam came to Westmore. She evidently was here at the meeting when I shared the experience, the horrible experience of losing one of our students because of gang violence, and Eddie Braden, freshman basketball player, on his way home from basketball practice, between Westmore and the shopping center where he lived, died on his lawn. He was murdered by a gun, an innocent student, happened to be of the wrong color. There were problems, gang-related problems, between the Claronada Boys, an Afro-American group, and a Filipino gang group. It seemed, that was nineteen ninety, and it's still fresh in my mind, this incident, this horrible tragedy that occurred on our campus, which is within a mile of these chambers. So I got the call, I was in Canada on that Friday, got the call when I came back home on Sunday, from the principal, he said, "The terrible thing has happened at Westmore. We've lost Eddie Braden, a freshman basketball player, due to gunshot wounds and gang-related violence." So on Monday, we had about a hundred and fifty Afro-American students, about a hundred came to Westmore packing, thinking about, in retaliation and revenge, how many they're going to take out at Westmore. This could be a Columbine, this could be a Sandy Hook. Horrible, horrible tragedy was about to occur. Fortunately for Westmore, we had two Afro-American staff.
Okay.
Norris and Hutcheson, who later went to work for Omega Boys Club and Street Soldiers. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Del Bond. Bill Chin? Well, come on up, Mr. Chin.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for letting me speak. My name's Bill Chin, I live in Daly City, and I come to speak in opposition of the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I do not oppose the possession of fire, of legal firearms. However, I think the permit as presented should be modified to limit the business operations to repair and service of firearms only, and not to the sales of firearms. There are already three licensed, or what do you call it, FFL, Federal Firearms Licenses in the Daly City, in the Daly City already, and I believe that's enough.
Thank you, Mr. Chin. Clayton Koo?
Good evening, members of the City Council. My name's Clayton Koo, and I'm a lifelong resident of Daly City. I stand here in opposition to the approval of the gun shop on Mission Street. I think that we don't need a gun shop in that part of the community, just because it's too close to homes and too close to schools, that our kids and our families. I believe that putting one there would be detrimental to our community, and it would also cause the opportunity for too much potential crime and violence in our community. So in that, I oppose the gun shop on Mission Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koo. Robert Phil?
Good evening, Council. I'm here in support of the gun store, gun shop. Ever since tables of San Bruno closed down, so here's back residents of Peninsula, without a local gunsmith to take care of their needs. The stores already in the area do not provide smith services. We're left with the other driving down to the South Bay, or having to ship the gun out to manufacture for repair. On top of the smiths, on top of that, smiths down south are frequently saddled with a deep backlog. My first experience with Center Arms is in their South City location. I have an old rifle that has been found for a couple generations, needs some work. I first went to a local gun store and was told they didn't have the ability to work on rifles. That response echoed all the way down the Peninsula, until I found a place in San Carlos off the repair services, only to be told that their smith was backed up for several months and said they didn't have the time for the job. About giving up on it, so I found Center Arms online, gave him a shot, he was more than happy to take the job, and went above and beyond what I expected, especially for a rifle of more sentimental value than anything. There are thousands of gun owners in Daly City alone, I'm going to mention tens of thousands and more in San Francisco and down the Peninsula. They're at the moment woefully underserved. The first piece of advice commonly given when there's a malfunction of firearms, take it to a qualified gunsmith, and have them check it out to make sure it's safe to use and functions properly. For that business, like Center Arms, people don't have that option.
Thank you, Mr. Phil. Dave Rodriguez?
Good evening, members of the Council. My name's Dave Rodriguez. I'm a law enforcement professional here in the Bay Area, also a resident of Daly City. I'm here to support the gun shop that Mr. Sedegren is proposing. I think it's important, as a police officer, that we allow members of the community to have safe firearms, and that they have a place to take them and have those firearms worked on safely in an environment where a professional is handling that firearms, as opposed to either the gun owner, me, or may not know what they're doing, or someone who just is a friend that may cause harm to themselves or others. I understand the concerns of the community, but I think that this is important, that Mr. Sedegren be allowed to run his business lawfully and responsibly, and I think it'd be a real asset to our community and the Bay Area, especially since people that live here have to go down to the South Bay to have any work done on firearms. It's important that they have a place to do it here in this community. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Marie Bruswella? Evening.
Council. I think you probably received the resolution from our school district. So the Jefferson Elementary School District did pass a resolution in opposition to having the gun store there for many reasons. We know that there have been many deaths of children by firearms, and we don't want to have it near our schools, and it's very close to our schools, and children do walk there, walk by there. So there's a, there's a high school over there, there's two elementary schools, and we would like to say, enough's enough. We don't need that much. So what I want to say is that we are touched by many things that have happened to our students. We had a student that was actually shot, and by a sibling, because obviously there, we're not protected. But we also had a boy come to our junior high during the middle of the day, Matt and his girlfriend, came down the hill, and as the momentum started going faster, he tripped and fell, and he shot himself in the leg, and then tried to explain to the police he wasn't going to do anything with that gun when he got there. Well, I hardly think, glad he fell, because maybe if he didn't, there might have been a real tragedy at that school. Also, as you heard about the Westmore High School, I was around for that as well, and that was a very big tragedy. Besides that, what we want to do is we have a zero tolerance policy in our district, and so do other schools, to try and keep weapons away from children. It's like anything, if they're walking by a shop that says gun shop, and they know it's there, it's like handing candy over to a child, they always are interested in it. Let's not have places like that, that could have somebody come up there and probably get guns out, or buy them, or whatever they do to them, because there's too much going on. If we can save the lives of our children, that's what we have to do. Kids come first.
Thank you, Ms. Bruswella. Dana Smith?
Over the weekend, I received, you know, the usual gun advertisements that you get in the Sunday paper. This one is from Big Five. It's very similar to the ones that you get from Dick's Sporting Goods, which was recently, you know, applauded and welcomed by this Council. And I'm just looking at the ad, and they have a ten-inch Bowie knife, twelve-inch survival knife, something called a tactical axe, that's fourteen and a half inches, it looks like something a pirate would use, Winchester field boat action rifle, twelve-gauge tactical pump-action thirty-oh-six. And these guns are being sold in stores that also sell athletic shoes, basketballs, camping gear for families. I hear these people concerned about children and families being exposed to guns, but apparently it's fine for these national chains to go ahead and sell all kinds of family-oriented goods with tactical axes and whatever. So my argument is, I don't like the axe, I don't particularly like guns, but what I do like is fairness and equal treatment under the law. And if you want to sit down and have a meeting about changing gun laws in Daly City, I think that's something that a lot of people would be interested in, but you have to treat people equally, and businesses equally. It looks like the gun shop on Mission Street has bent over backwards with all this security and concern for the community. It is not near homes. I've been in that location. I just don't see how that you can allow this for a big chain business and for a small, family-operated business that's bending over backwards to be safe and... family-operated business that's bending over backwards to be safe and concerned and responsible and deny that small family business the same rights that you applaud for these big chain stores. Thank you.
Melinda Dart? Melinda Dart?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council. I am Melinda Dart. I'm the president of the Jefferson Elementary Federation of Teachers, and I speak on behalf of the three hundred and fifty elementary teachers in our district. And they have urged me to come before you and urge you not to open a gun shop on Mission Street because the teachers don't see how having any more access to guns in the area would help our students or our families in any way. And in fact, we feel that increased law enforcement activity in the area could only lead to more stops involving youth and young men of color in our area. And we would ask you, leaders of our community, instead of becoming known for leaders who allowed the first gun sale shop and repair shop in that area, why not think about being known for being bold visionary leaders who promote some other firsts, such as champion culturally relevant violence prevention in the Mission Street area? Or promote robust suicide prevention in that area and mental health services? And join with us to promote community schools which can provide community and student benefits and help us provide protection in our community from pricing out the families that have been calling Daly City home for decades and show support for living wages that give our community a fighting chance. All of those things would enhance our students' and families' lives, but not more guns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dart. Rebecca Douglas?
Rebecca Douglas, I'm a member of the Jefferson Elementary School Board. It's not clear that I could say anything to add to or improve on what Ms. Dart just said on behalf of our district. I do want to just reiterate that our board did pass unanimously a resolution opposing the addition of a gun shop to the Mission Street corridor. I'm all in favor of the Second Amendment, and I'm all in favor of business expansion in Daly City, but this is not the right business for our neighborhoods and our schools. Thank you.
Jennifer Osner? Jennifer Osner?
Yes, hi, I'm Jennifer Osner. I've lived in Daly City since nineteen seventy-nine, and I've never gotten involved in any political issue of any kind. This is just too important. I'm incensed that I was not notified by the city that a gun repair slash shop was trying to open in my city. This is not a regular gun shop. According to its website, the business is capable of modifying and upgrading rifles into assault rifles. This is a different story. Who will you support? The powerful lobby of the NRA or the residents and businesses of Daly City? I personally have gone door to door to homes and businesses and have found through all these signatures that no one is in support of this gun shop opening. People are very afraid of it opening. As a matter of fact, business owners are afraid, afraid to say anything. It was very eye-opening to talk to these people. I ask you, my elected officials, to act courageously and responsibly by voting no and thereby proving to us that you are choosing public safety over the desires of the NRA and their fear-mongering techniques. If any tragedies were to occur because you acted cowardly and voted yes, then you would be to blame. As a side note, I'd like to bring to your attention this from your City Council meeting agenda report on the firearm repair sales, August tenth. It states here seventy-five percent of the business would be devoted to servicing firearms, which includes repairs and cleaning. Twenty percent would involve firearm sales, and five percent would be devoted to firearm assembly. Then on today's date, it changes to say the applicant explained that his business would comprise of eighty percent repair service and twenty percent from sales. Why is that and which is it? How can we trust what he's doing? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chucky Hollins? Chucky Hollins? Am I saying that right? Come on up, sir. All right.
It wouldn't be no gunshot. That's bad. It shouldn't be no shooting out there at all.
Okay.
Because it's kind of bad.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hollins. Thank you. Nellie Charles?
Well, I'll say good evening, members of the Council. For all of the people getting shot throughout all of America, I'm against a gun shop in my neighborhood or any other neighborhood. People are even shooting people they don't even know like it's a sport. For example, Phoenix, Arizona, right now, that's going on. Another terrible shooting that happened to a beautiful twenty-five-year-old woman walking with her dad on Pier fourteen. As she fell and was shot, she said to her dad, "Please help me." What is happening in America? What is really happening in America? God bless us all, but I'm very upset about it, very upset, and I don't want it in my neighborhood. And as far as gun repair goes, that I understand. But why can't they go to Big, I think Pamela mentioned Sporting Five? They do that? Repair it. Why don't we do it that way? But we don't want any guns being sold. There's enough guns already out there shooting people. This is like another country. America's changed so much.
Thank you, Ms. Charles. Sandra Gordon? Sandra Gordon?
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council members. Sandra Gordon, I've been a Daly City resident since nineteen seventy-seven. I felt safe then, but I don't feel safe now, and I'll tell you why. Couple of years ago, two doors down from me, I found out from my neighbors that that house was broken into. What did they take? Guns. With somebody who knew there were guns there because the residents of that house were not home at the time. Well, if that's all they wanted, they didn't take anything else, just the guns. Doesn't make you feel very strong or safe. The worst thing that happened to me, anyway, was December twenty-second in the afternoon, all of a sudden I hear all kinds of sirens on my street. And I look out the window, my husband too, and there's four or five San Mateo County cars, a couple of police cars and Daly City police cars. And all these guns are pointed at this neighbor across the street in the second house across from my house. He had his car parked illegally in the empty for-sale house next to mine. And all these guns, you know, if they went off, what was in my mind, I could have been shot, my husband could have been shot, if those rickety shade, you know, if they really did, you know, do any shooting. But they arrested those two guys that were in the car, that they were, you know, after. And eventually, they were, I said arrested, in jail. But nobody knew that they had committed, at least I didn't, on the street know that the day before they committed a armed robbery, which means if it's armed robbery, they had guns. We don't need them.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon.
Money doesn't come before the life of citizens.
Betty Deitch? Betty Deitch?
Hi, I'm Betty Deitch, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Your responsibility is for the economic and community development, right? And I submit that granting a use permit would be against the interests of both. Because the, having more proximity to Century Theaters, which I go to and many people do, there've been instances around the nation where people shot and kill people in movie theaters, right? So, I just wanted to say, what if somebody did that at Century Theaters? Then probably other people wouldn't want to go there. You'd have a huge loss in revenue, okay? And also, much more than any revenue you'd get from this gun and repair. So, and also would hurt the surrounding restaurants and businesses if that were to happen at Century Theaters. And that is not a far-out supposition. And I feel very concerned for the safety, the community safety, as well as the economics of, just doesn't work, I think so. I speak in opposition.
Thank you very much. Yomika Miller?
Hello, my name is Yomika Miller. I'm a Daly City resident as well as a parent of three sons. And I oppose the gun shop planning to open up at seven, three forty-five Mission Street, especially around schools and family residence. These are not just hunting rifles, these are assault rifles. With all of these violence, all of the violence that exists in our neighborhoods, there's really no need for any gun shops. If you check the statistics and all of the anger that exists in people and in the United States and New York City, you can see that there's no need for a new shop that sells firearms besides the ones that we already have. I'm pretty sure that the crime rate will go up and people's state of minds will change for the worse, knowing that they can purchase a gun in the neighborhood. The day that I found out the gun shop was proposed to open in Daly City, I just came from a funeral of a nineteen-year-old girl who was gunned down. She was a family friend, and she was shot in Daly City by someone with issues of anger, just aiming, just aiming at anyone. And she happened to be one of the girls that was shot and killed. And as you can see, me and my son, we would not like to see any more gun shops or any more guns being distributed around the United States, let alone our city, Daly City.
Paulette Brown? Paulette Brown?
Well, that's fine, that's fine. Well, my name is Paulette Brown, and I oppose the gun shop because it shouldn't be there. I lost my son, Aubrey Abercasa. He was shot thirty times with a semi-automatic gun, thirty rounds of bullets left that gun into my son. And I don't know if I had anybody else to help me hold up these posters to show the audience what I have, what I have to live with every day. If I can get someone else to do that, to show the audience, and I'll show you what I have to live with every day. My son was shot thirty times with someone carrying a gun with a bar, and we're talking about opening up a shop? All they got to do is, okay, it's legal. Where it is, you got, they can break in the shop and take the guns. They can take the serial numbers off of those guns and off the bullets and still sell these guns to shoot our children. Do we have to wait till it hit your homes before you do anything? We don't want to have mothers like myself standing over our children. I've been doing this for nine years, nine years. August fourteenth of this month made nine years since my son's been murdered. Murdered, brutally murdered because he hollered out and said, "Run," because he saw perpetrators with a gun to go shoot some neighbors down the street. And he took his body out there and shot, and said, "Run." A sixteen-year-old boy just turned seventeen-year-old, and his mother had to walk across the stage and receive his diploma. It's sad. So, if we open up these gun shops, and it says here firearms are the third-leading killer of children aged one through seventeen years old. It's the truth. I've been going to visuals for the last nine years. I want people to see this is what I have to deal with every day. My son's body decaying. He was due to graduate from school, and this is what I have left. Please, don't open up this shop.
Let me call up Claire Sanchina? Am I saying that? Claire?
Thank you. My name is Claire Sanchina, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I've never done this before, but I really felt obligated to come here tonight and to speak out against this gun shop for two reasons. The first reason is for twenty-five years, I worked as a nurse practitioner at San Francisco General Hospital Urgent Care, and I saw a lot of the victims of gunshots. And a lot of them were for Daly City because the neighborhood, our cities are porous, and you're much closer to, Daly City is much closer to San Francisco General than the General Hospital in San Mateo. The second reason I'm here is because of my son, Camilo. He was an EMT. He worked at Falk Ambulance in San Mateo. His base was Seton Hospital. He completed paramedic school on December two thousand and fourteen, and he went out for a rare night to celebrate on Mission Street, and he was killed leaving the club. He is my only child. I was always against guns because of what I saw in my work, but this really made me start to investigate. And what I've found is that eighty-eight people a day in this country are killed by guns, whether homicide, suicide, or accidents. And President Obama, his Surgeon General, who is trying to get elected and the NRA is opposing, has declared this a public health issue. And I believe it is a public health issue, as I was a public health worker in my, when I worked. I believe we all look at the news and we see it happen, and we can't stop it all, but we can do our small part. And my small part is I'm going to start speaking out. I've left my work, my career. I don't have a son. I don't have a child anymore, and I'm going to go speak out. And I think elected officials need to start doing their part, too. We're not going to solve the whole problem, but we could do something. And something maybe will prevent another mother like myself and this mother who just spoke, who has to wake up to this every morning. Thank you.
Ovis Benjamin?
Good evening.
Evening.
I come because, first of all, my grandparents bought their house in San Diego in nineteen forty on Daly City. And as a young girl, as a young girl, I grew up in San Francisco, but my home was here in Daly City as well. As my grandparents, they both passed away, my grandmother passed away. But I have family that I brought here to Daly City to live here because this is where I grew up as well, with my grandparents owning their home on San Diego in nineteen forty. I now live in that home because I knew it would be a good place for my children, my two sons. It hurts. This is my sister. Her son was killed, my nephew, okay? And we, as a family, formed the La Dorce Foundation. And these are not just, these are many. There's more than this that have been killed. So, when I learned that there was a gun shop going to come in a community where I lived, where my grandparents lived... where my grandparents lived, where there was communities and businesses, where on my block today, they know me still from a little bitty girl. Some of the community, the people that are on my block, they still know who I am and I know who they are. We grew up together in this community. This is something that should not be. The API scores are up at Jefferson High School for the kids. The kids are working hard. Why would you want to bring something that is so negative into a positive environment? There are other places you can go. That is unfair. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Wu?
My name is Kelly Wu, I'm a resident of Daly City. I am for, for this gunsmith store. I think that if you say no, it's violating the civil rights. As you've already heard through the court system about a baker that didn't, that did not want to serve or make a cake. I understand you're kind of looking at me kind of weird.
No, I can't hear you.
It's the sound, there's a sound.
I'm sorry.
Looking at you weird.
But I believe that the civil rights are going to be violated if you say no. All the courts have already said that if he's able to, if, if people are able to not, regarding, it's hard for me. What I'm trying to say is that all these court system has already said that the guy's rights have been violated. I am for you opening it. I'm sorry, I'm just kind of nervous.
Okay, take a deep breath and, it's okay.
But you're looking it up in Kentucky where the counselor, the clerk, went to jail because he violated the rights of not letting people have their marriage certificate. You have people up in Oregon says that, "I don't want to bake a cake for, for the gays" or for people, and the court says they have to. Now you're trying to say that he can't open up a gun store or a place to open to service the revolver because you may not like it. But he has the civil rights and he should be able to. If you also look at about guns being a cause of death, cars are also making people for causing death too. In San Francisco, last year, they had more pedestrian death than guns last year.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you very much, sir. Barry Rodriguez?
There's another car behind you, can another person defer their two minutes?
Sure, who was that?
Paul.
Yeah, Paul.
Okay.
Malata, is that?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Councilman, city manager, mayor. First of all, I've lived in Daly City thirteen years. I've lived in many places where they had gun stores, no sudden eruption of violence occurred. You've done your due diligence legally. He's jumped through all the legal hurdles he had to do. I've felt ashamed that this matter was deferred to September the fourteenth. I don't think he was treated equally like other people. There's been, I don't know if you're aware of it, that there've been slanderous material put on this guy. I don't know him, I don't have a dog in this fight. I don't know if you want to partake in that. The organizer of this opposition is slandering this guy to my face and through email. So, he probably has cause for litigation. And he has cause for litigation against City Daly City. Now, I have heartfelt sympathy for anyone that's suffered a gun violence, but there's gangs in Daly City. You've got Nortain, you've got Hells Angels, you've got street gangs. They don't get their guns by walking down the street and going to a legal gun shop and getting their guns. This is a ridiculous argument. And I'm ashamed of the union people that work in schools. They ought to know better than talking about that. They know where they're getting the guns. This is ridiculous, this is a sham. I understand the sympathy for it. I've been robbed myself of gunpoint. But this has nothing to do with a small shop owners trying to, trying to support his family. The tactics I've been using in this campaign is ridiculous. And I'm ashamed of the treatment that, "I don't know this guy, I have no dog in the fight, I'm not an NRA member." And it's been portrayed that this demonized this guy, lynch mob mentality, talking about all the support he's getting from the NRA, where's the NRA? This is ridiculous, this matter should have been settled when it was rigid scheduled. And this is the way this happens in this city. You get, you get these people, I feel for, I respect the opinions of all the people in opposition, but they're misinformed. There's no factual statistical evidence that in Daly City, this would cause more violence. And I've lived in San Bruno, and I've lived in plenty of places at gun stores. You, you show me a factual basis for opposing this. I want anyone Utah, you guys are lawyers, you ought to know better than this. I'd be suing and I'm willing to give, I'm willing to gift a legal fund, defend this guy's rights and sue for him for being slandered, denied equal treatment. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Feinberg?
Good evening. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to see that the main opposition to the shop here is the concern with gun violence, school shootings, easier access to guns. And as this gentleman before just said, I think everyone here is sympathetic to that. I'd just like to make a quick point. There are tens of millions of guns that are available online right now. I could go out in this lobby, pull out my laptop and within five minutes I can purchase a handgun. Yes, you still have to go through the FFL requirements, the legal registration, pass a background check. Stopping this man from having his gun shop isn't going to put the tiniest dent into people's ability to purchase handguns and other firearms. It's just a reality of e-commerce today. Anything you can buy in a retail shop, you can buy online. And tens of millions of guns are being purchased online by everybody. And if they don't have a computer, they can drive five minutes or ten minutes from his shop to San Bruno or Pacifica or South San Francisco and go to the gun shop there. If you do not give him the use permit, as well-intentioned as it might be, you're only going to accomplish two things. You're not going to dent gun violence or any of the thing these people are saying, as sympathetic as I am to their argument, because these people get their guns illegally or they get them legally online. That's where I get all my guns. Never bought a gun for Mr. Sedergrin, I never will. But he provides a valuable service of gunsmithing. And if you disallow his permit, all you're going to do is force people like myself who need their guns maintained so that they're safe and reliable to drive twenty, thirty, forty miles to get it done. And you're going to take a man who's honest, hard-working, small-business owner and force him out of business when he's just trying to support his family and people continue to go online, on the internet, and purchase as many guns as they want. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Kerrigan?
A few years ago, the city of Sunnyvale was concerned about crime in the vicinity of the gun stores located there. Sunnyvale had their planning department do a study of crime locations in the city and they found out that only three serious crimes had been committed in the vicinity of their gun stores and two of these were committed before the stores were there. They did find clusters of serious crime around schools. I would like to urge the city council to approve this use permit for Seder Arms. Retail firearms businesses are heavily regulated by the federal and state government. Firearms repair and sales is an entirely legitimate business. A permanent, a permit to operate a legal business should not be denied for ideological reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kerrigan. Donna Carusis?
Thank you. My name's Donna Carusis and I am the landlord. When the lease application for a gun shop came across my desk, I was at first concerned. I called the Daly City Police Department and spoke to the Assistant Chief and told him that I had a prospective tenant who wants to open a shop for gun repairs and sales. I asked his opinion and told him that I do not want to bring any trouble to Daly City. He informed me that it is a rigorous application process and if the applicant makes it through, then it should be fine. He called me a few days later to tell me that he had talked to the South San Francisco Police where Todd Sedergrin had his previous shop and everything checked out fine. I also spoke with my father, who owned this property until his death in May of this year. My dad was born and raised in Daly City, graduated from Jefferson High School, served in World War II and has been an active part of the Daly City community all of his life as a public accountant, Toyota dealer, body shop owner and property owner. He cared deeply for the city and he felt strongly in favor of leasing to Todd for a gun shop. A few weeks ago, three Daly City firefighters came to my office to complete a yearly fire inspection. I asked their opinion of a gun shop on Mission Street and their response was favorable. I do understand the concern of the community. After talking to the police, firefighters, my dad and meeting Todd, I am confident that Todd will be a caring and involved member of the Daly City community and provide gun safety instruction, educator of gun safety, so.
Kalima Salahoudin?
Good evening, Mayor Brenna Ventura and Vice Mayor Torres and members of the Daly City Council. My name's Kalima Salahoudin. I'm a member of the Jefferson Union High School District Board of Trustees and I'm also a Daly City resident with three children living here in the city. There's been a lot of things said already and I know this is a really heavy decision and I thank you for listening to all our comments. My concern is the location of this, the store is in the proximity to two of our schools. It is right around the corner from Thornton High School and within walking distance of Jefferson High School. While I hear a lot of the arguments in for and against, you know, I know the statistics and I don't think that a gun store will increase crime. But my concern is the environment that we create for our children. What is the neighborhood like? What are they walking past every day? What businesses are they walking past every day? It's a reflection of who we are, what we allow. People have already said that there are, there's ability to get guns in the area, ten-minute drive, five-minute drive away. Certain things shouldn't be convenient. Certain things should not be convenient. I understand and I have, that this gentleman is trying to run a business and I don't begrudge him that and I don't think that, you know, this is anything against him. My concern is, these things and these type of stores usually come at poor areas and poor cities. You don't see these things being asked to be put in Menlo Park, Atherton. It's, they target us and our communities and there's a reason for that. So, I would ask you to please take these things into consideration and again, I appreciate the heavy decision that you have to make and I thank you for your comment.
Angelica Magalon? Is there an Angelica Magalon, last call? Oh, there we go.
Hello, everyone. I oppose this new gun shop because what is best for the community? Another shop there that sells guns? Kids, teenagers especially, they're so attracted. We glorify video games that show violent guns and, you know, what are they going to do? They're going to go, go by this shop and say, "Hey, you know, that looks like fun", whatever they're thinking. I mean, is that the message that we want to send to our kids? No, we don't. What is best for the community? I mean, like some of the people said here, there's already three other shops. That should be more than enough. I mean, and it shouldn't be a convenience, like the young lady over there said. No, it shouldn't be. I mean, just like two, three weeks ago, right? We had our neighbor who was shot accidentally by a gun. And, you know, that is not best, that's not what's best for the community. And I think it is very important that we realize that these kids that go to school in Jefferson, Polosita and the other great, grade schools that are there, you know, they are so curious. This is, we don't want them to see this. We want them to see better things than a gun shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Tullier?
Good evening, my name is Valerie Tullier and I'm here to oppose the gun shop. I just want to say that there are no civil rights being violated. Those civil rights can be exercised at another location. There are no threats to anyone's Second Amendment rights. You still have the right to bear arms, you just don't, we don't want you to buy them next to our schools. This is a neighborhood community. Is allowing gun shops to go up in your city, our city, going to be part of your political legacy? While I support small businesses, I do not support businesses that are detrimental to our community. I was raised in the Mission District and I facilitate the Mission Police Collaborative. I know the damage of gun violence. I've been to way too many funerals and vigils for families. I consciously chose to raise my son in Daly City for the safe and small community that it is. I voted for all of you because I trust that you have the best interest of my community, of your community, in your heart. I hope that you take an honorable and a principled position this evening and not allow this gun shop to be located in this community. Location, location, location. He can open up his gun shop, but not here. Not by schools, not by my, my sons and my nephews. I know too many mothers and you heard them here. I hope that a mother's pain will override someone, some particularly, well, I'm not going to get into gender here, but particularly for some other desire for Second Amendment rights or civil rights. There's no civil rights being violated here. So, I hope that you respect these mothers and the pain that they feel towards gun violence. You can honor them by not opening another gun shop. Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm here to support Mr. Sedergrin. I've known Mr. Sedergrin for eight years now. We raise our children in the same community. We volunteer together, we've coached together. In dealing with our kids, safety has always been priority number one. I'm here to support him and the fairness treatment to this business owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Evangelista?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Patrick Evangelista. I would like to support Todd with his gun shop. And first of all, I would like to say that Todd is actually, has a, sorry, I kind of lost my train of thought. Todd actually has a daughter. I've met her before when I first met him. And a father would not let his child near any danger or any sort of problems, just like that. He'll protect them. Basically, what I'm trying to say is, even though it's near schools, he's still a responsible person. He does not want to do all this negativity to children around even though it's so far close to school. And basically, I just want to support his, his business.
Thank you. Richard Luker?
Hello, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Richard Luker and I am here also to support the granting of the use permit for the, for the gun shop. I just want to make two quick points, one of them about the nature of the business. And the, when I read the material associated with the agenda packet, I was just overwhelmed by the degree to which Mr. Sedergrin is going beyond the pale in terms of the security measures and the operational measures to make sure that his store is not going to be a problem for the community. So, I think that he's clearly demonstrated that he's sensitive to the issue of gun violence and access and he wants to do things the right way. The second point is some reflection on who are going to be the likely customers for a shop like this. Mr. Sedergrin is a former law enforcement officer. So, this is the last place that a bad guy is going to want to try to go to get a gun. His customers are likely going to be a combination of responsible gun owners, current and former law enforcement. current and former law enforcement officers who are looking to get their gun serviced or repaired. So I just, I think, you know, gun violence is a problem, but I just don't think that this shop is going to be contributing to that problem. So I would urge you to approve the use permit. Thank you.
Vincent Ridley.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing me out. My name is Vincent. I actually currently work for a gun store. And I wanted to bring up a point about the nature of gun stores. You may have people in your community that can't drive very far or can't do things and they may have, they may have currently lost a spouse, a husband, a wife, and they have firearms in their home that they want to get rid of legally. They can go to Mr. Seder and they can bring them the firearm and he can advise them on what to do. He can buy the gun from them or he can tell them, you know, you need to bring it to the police department to turn it in. But he's providing that service. If you don't necessarily allow him to be there, they're gonna have to take that gun thirty, forty miles away. If they don't have the transportation means to do so, they will not be allowed to move that firearm. They may not know how to operate that firearm. And having them go out of their way to find a place to get rid of that firearm could potentially hurt somebody. They could hurt themselves or other people. Having a gun store, and you're also gonna serve San Francisco, you're also gonna serve South San Francisco. Okay? You're helping people out by allowing him to be there. He can also fix firearms. That's making them inherently safer. They're not gonna go off at a shooting range or in transportation or anything like that. That's all. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Rosemary Mendoza.
Good evening.
Evening.
Honorable mayor and members of the council. I just want to thank you for allowing me to speak for a short moment. I am a resident of Daly City, moving here in 2008. I invested in a home here in this community. This, this issue of the gun shop, I don't believe, for me personally, I don't object to a gun shop at all. It's the location. The location is extremely, a location that's putting the children and the citizens of this community at a higher risk. It just increases your risk of what might happen because you have an elementary school, a high school, a continuing education school all within walking distance of there. There's also a nightclub that's located close by. If tempers flare and things happen, I'm not saying that a gun can't be accessed anywhere else. All I'm saying is reduce the risk factor by having it located somewhere else where it's not around so many minor children. Thank you.
Mary Durham.
Good evening, council members.
Evening.
I am Daly City resident for forty years. I am a gun owner. I have multiple guns. My husband was, how do you say? He was a hunter. So I have rifles and I have handguns in my house. I'm not against guns. I am against the gun shop. I must say that. Yes, all of my guns are very legal, okay? Registered. I also feel that right now we're giving the wrong, how do you say? We're telling our youth one thing and we're saying another. I'm appalled at my two friends here for not making this well-known to the community. I also am hearing that the owner is perfect. I'm sorry, no one is perfect. Things can happen. No one is perfect. If he was so perfect, if his gun shop is so perfect, sit it in the middle of Westlake. Don't bring it over by the high schools. I feel very strongly about that. And again, I'm not opposed to guns, okay? My guns are in great shape. They're locked away. They're in a safe. No one can get to them. But just think about what message we're telling our children by having the gun shop. And I will drive to Pacifica. I will drive to Sunnydale if I need to have my gun serviced. Don't look at me shocked. Thank you.
Ronnie Miller. Ronnie Miller.
Good evening, council. I, everything has been said. I am for the gentleman to have his business. I, hey, I...
It's my wife.
I definitely agree with this lady and two of the gentlemen that spoke. If you don't give Todd the opportunity to have his business, which I think he's smart enough to know that if these children even come near the front door, he's not gonna let them in. There's a certain age where you allow someone into a store like that and don't. I just lost my train of thought. Oh, and the other thing is if this doesn't pass, I'm going to try to get something passed that Dix and the other store, Big Five, have their guns pulled. Because how many children are walking in? How many children are walking in the mall? How many kids go in to buy a basketball or a tee-shirt and there's the gun counter? So if you don't give Todd the opportunity to allow him to make a living, then I want the guns pulled from those two stores.
Thank you. John Cooper. John Cooper. Come on up.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and thank you, everybody, for showing up today because I think we're all here for public safety. Obviously, there's a lot of concern, but a lot of misunderstanding. For me, the safety aspect is this gentleman here, who I don't know, would provide a service to me from the Gunsmith Service. I've actually had to service my own weapons because I couldn't find anybody I could trust or anybody close. I've traveled as far as San Jose, Northern California. I've sent guns to Virginia to have worked on. I would like to have the opportunity to be able to have somebody that I can work with that's local. So that's from my personal perspective. I just don't understand, I understand, you know, this lady's, this loss that she's had and, and some of the things that have been said, but I think there's a misconception. I hear a lot of people saying, this gun shot somebody. A gun can't shoot anybody. A person does. The problem is the, the person, not the instrument they use. There's a lot of instruments that can be used. So that's, it's a confusing argument for a lot of people. And to deny a person the ability to open up a legitimate business, to provide a service that actually does provide or have a public safety component, I think it, it, it doesn't seem to be logical to me. So that's why I'm supporting the opening of this shop. I actually support the fact that the lady that wants to open up in Westlake, because I live in Westlake, so it's a little bit closer to me. And I also like to say that I moved here in ninety-five from San Francisco, born and raised there, and I've raised my kids here, or raising my kids here. And I feel that, I just want to let people know that it's, a lot of people think there's these nuts that are out there and it's not, it's not, we're just regular people that are in need of services. Thank you for your time.
Carmen Yu.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Carmen Yu. Fifteen years resident of Daly City. I have six childrens and I'm here representing Jefferson Council, PTA. We have a small city of Daly City, which is, has two high school, three high school, and three middle school, and ten elementary school, which is, we're opposed to have this gun shop because our children, they have young, young age, very curious to, especially to anything that kind of give them idea of what a gun is. And these teenagers, they have access with their gangs, which is having the store in Daly City. Please think about it. Our children here in Daly City, we care about them. We care about their safety and we know that our curiosity sometimes take them to a different way. And I hope that you guys will think about this and we are opposed to a gun shop. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up.
Good evening, honorable mayor, vice mayor, honorable council persons and admin. My name is Manufo Lea Lanua'i. I currently serve on Jefferson Elementary School Board as well as the Status of Commission for Women here in San Mateo. But I'm here to speak as a twenty-year resident of San Francisco, I'm sorry, of Daly City, a mother of six, an aunt to hundreds, and a camp director to a thousand kids here in Daly City in North County. My biggest concern is what I've heard tonight from many is location. I'm not against new business, not at all. I don't know where this gentleman lives, but I don't know if he would want a gun shop in his neighborhood. I don't know if he lives here in Daly City. I know nothing of him. When I first saw the permit request, all I saw was gun shop. And in my mind, I moved here from San Francisco, being a native there, to, to live in a community that I thought I'd feel safer, a small-town community that I think I found here in Daly City. I believe in every one of you sitting there today because I too have voted for each of you. And I want to, I want to say that I believe that it's your, your job, that you're charged with the task to provide us with a safer community. And I think that we, we get that there's unlimited access to firearms. It's very easy to access them. But I still believe that you, it is your responsibility as our public servants and our representatives to provide the deterrent when you can and when you are able to. And I think you have the opportunity to do that here. I really believe that. I don't oppose new business, but I do oppose it here in Daly City. And I hope that you'll have the courage, the leadership, and the foresight to say no to this. That's what I hope for, I pray for, especially as a mother and a representative to the students of this community. Thank you very much for that, the council.
Elizabeth Torres. Elizabeth Torres. One more, is no Elizabeth Torres?
She's here, she's outside.
Okay. There you go. Come on up.
Good evening, council. My name is Elizabeth Torres. I'm a longtime resident of Daly City. I also lost two kids who were Daly City residents to homicide. They were murdered. First one is Francisco Garcia Peña Torres. He was murdered on Templeton in Hanover, April sixteen, two thousand and four. This was a Daly City homicide case. He was murdered by modified guns. Then on August thirty of two thousand nine, I lost my youngest son, Alberto Garcia Peña Torres, also murdered by modified guns. I'm standing here as a survivor. It's very hard after hearing these other mothers speak. It stirred something up in me. I love this community. I'm vigilant with this community. I've worked with law enforcement, but during this time that my kids were murdered, Daly City was overwhelmed. They could not handle this situation of homicide and each and every one of you sitting up there noseless. So it was up to the parents, myself, my children's father, to contact Homeland Security to intervene. Because waiting five years for Daly City to do something, even though they had the information, it didn't happen. So Homeland Security was contacted. We got an agent assigned, Mr. Gingona. And they shut it down. But as you can see, it's still coming up. It's still popping up. They're still infiltrating Daly City and our surrounding areas. So all I'm asking is that, a no vote, please. Mr. Gingona, I know you're coming up for reelection or you want to.
Okay.
You want, you want some office. I'm just surprised that the Daly City residents were not notified, each and every household. They were not.
All right, thank you, Ms. Torres. Thank you.
No, no, I'm sorry. And Ms. Christensen, when you all, when you guys lose a child, then you will know. The pain it costs.
All right, Ms. Torres, thank you very much. We, we have to be respectful of everybody's time.
I understand that, okay? But I put my blood and sweat in this city. I lost two sons, so I'm asking you guys on behalf of my murdered children, please do not allow this gun shop to take place. It has no place in Daly City. That is not what we want, how we want to revamp Mission Street. That is not the message we want to send to these young gang members coming here. And you know that they're here.
Thank you, Ms. Torres. Alyssa Farana.
I, it's, this is, I'd like to say hello to everybody and thank you for letting me speak. I speak as a fifty-four-year resident of Daly City. I've grown up in this neighborhood and I've listened to everybody's stories and I've heard both sides. You know, it, it, it's not the gun store. You know what it is? It's the symbolism that it gives us when we put that name up on Mission Street. If you guys vote on that, okay? Also, I'd like to hear, I don't know if they heard because I had to go sing at a funeral, I'd like to know why this store didn't happen in South City? And how many years, I'm sorry, did this gentleman have a business in South City? And how did this become our fight? Why do we have to get riled up and fight with people? People do have a right if they want to have a gun. Does any, where's the paper? This is not a gun. This is ridiculous. And nobody should be fighting for a gun like this in our city. Because if someone shoots somebody with this gun and it's your neighbor and it's somebody at some door, guess what? These shots are gonna go in your house. And then what are you gonna do? In your beds? This is wrong. And I can't believe it had to be our fight. My heart is torn for these parents. But you know what? I'm torn for us. How could you guys even let this happen? Why isn't this in South City? I know it's there. I know it's, I know it's in Dix, but you guys got to realize that it's not, it's the symbolism. Do we need to drive by and see guns on our streets? As it is, we've got the cigarette places going. You know, we, this has got to stop.
Thank you, Ms. Farana. Kevin Morton. Kevin Morton. Is there a Kevin Morton here? Okay, come on up.
Good evening, city council.
Evening.
I apologize for what I'm dressed.
You're fine, go ahead.
It's been a long day. I am a peace officer in the area around here. I just like to say I am appalled in regards to the gun violence that everybody sees on TV and everything. And in the news, of course. I do see it on the street as well. I am charged in protecting the community as well. I do go to the elementary schools and the middle schools of Daly City and Broadmoor area every day. I do sit with the children and everything. I have a whole load of weapons on my person at any time. They're my tools for what I use for my job. I don't believe that the gun violence in America today is due to the guns themselves. There are many bad people out there that I do see every day and I'm well aware that obviously they shouldn't have guns. Yes, ma'am, with guns, absolutely. And I do, I'm sorry for your silence as well. I am charged for every one of these people's children when I am working and I do work quite often. In my eyes, I have used Mrs. Sedergrin's services as well to repair my firearms. There have been issues at my department to where we have had troubles with our firearms. Unfortunately, we had to down those firearms and not use them and keep them on the street in case we needed them due to them being broken. I have used his services and I couldn't be happier with his services as well for fixing the tools that I use on the daily. So I am in support of, uh, having Mr. Sedergrin have his business. Although, of course, I do oppose all this violence that we see every day in the news and bad people having firearms. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have come to the last speaker card, which is Mr. Sedergrin. But I just wanted to make sure, is there anybody who filled out a speaker card who did not get a chance to speak? Did you all fill the?
Did you turn them in?
Did you turn it in? I didn't get one, but I'll take your word for it. Come on up. LeAnn Young? You two, why don't you pass yours up?
Yeah, the third hand up too.
Okay.
That's three.
You turned it in? Where is it?
I don't have it. Do you guys have it? All right.
Just state your name for the record.
Okay. Uh, my name is LeAnn Young. To the City Council, I just wanna say, you know, in terms of, I'm not for guns and especially assault weapons. And I believe already that with everything that's out there, you know, in the United States, people are desensitized and guns are glamorized. And it's like, wow, you know? And, um, I've seen a lot more homelessness up in the north part of Daly City. When I come out of the, um, stores, I see people just loitering around, and I don't feel safe already with knowing that the person doesn't even have a gun. And as I, uh, get older, I'm concerned about that, as well as I'm concerned about my kids who are in middle school right now. He may be responsible, but there are a lot of people that do buy guns that aren't responsible. And there are a lot of people that you see on the news that have mental health issues. And how is he gonna discern whether to sell it to this person? That person could be, that could look normal. A lot of these people that went off and shot in the movie theaters, shot in the schools, shot wherever it is, you know, we have rights as well that don't own guns. We don't wanna be victims. So, you know, if you, I understand, again, you know, he's, sounds like a very responsible person, but on Mission Street, again, and schools right there, I'm, I'm not for, uh, the gun shop, and I ask that you vote no. And mainly because I think I've known people who have lost their children, they were innocent victims of gun violence. And, um, it was out of their control, whether people have good intentions, like say, a, a gun could be stolen and a life could be taken, an innocent life.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Leon Susbilla?
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening.
Councilmembers. Uh, my name's Leon Susbilla. I'm a Daly City native. I'm also the Assistant Manager of Hybrid Arms in San Francisco. And I am a U.S. Army soldier. I swore an oath to protect and preserve the Constitution. That's why I'm here. I know firsthand, there are stringent regulations down from the ATF, California DOJ, and down to a local level here, that will regulate everything that is done in a gun shop. Business catering to those who wish to practice their Second Amendment and to practice safe firearm purchase, all that is brought down to three of those tiers. It's not right to outlaw a business just 'cause you don't like it. Regulations shouldn't prohibit you from which books to read, which religions to practice, and which, the, which, which religion to practice, and that. San Mateo has a high conviction rate and a low murder count. I think Daly City could use a specialty shop like this. Thank you for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Susbilla. Is there one more? Come on up, sir. And then just state your name for the record, fill out a card after.
Good evening. My name is Pedro Rodriguez. I'm a certified public accountant, a small-business owner. I'm also retired Navy commander. Okay, I'm not a member of the NRA, but I am a gun owner. And I know that there are a lot of gun owners who are very responsible. Uh, having a shop here in Daly City would make it very convenient for a lot of the gun owners who are legitimate gun owners and good citizens who want to basically service their guns and maybe even purchase one, okay? And there is nothing really going in San Francisco. We can't even buy ammunition in San Francisco, okay? We have to basically come to Daly City at, uh, Big Five or at Dix, okay? So that's one other thing I wanna bring up. It's kind of unfair that they have licenses to do that, okay? And a small-business owner who's trying to do something to improve the economy in Daly City is denied that right. Now, as a commander in the Navy, I obviously risked my life for the Constitution of the United States, and of that is the Second Amendment, okay? And I believe he has a right, as well as anybody else does, to have, to take care of, have a business and to bear firearms. It is not those individuals who are legally purchasing those guns and are responsible who are doing, unfortunately, the killings that a lot of these people have had, had to go through. It is people that are either mentally ill or obtained firearms illegally that have done something like that. So for that, I mean, I'm really sorry for you having to go through all that pain, but we should not be punished for that, because most of the people that do use businesses like, like Todd's here are, are legal citizens and are doing a good, you know, trying to do, upright citizens, trying to, uh, take care of their, their families and the, and the people around them, okay? Uh, I think there was one more thing I wanted to say, I just lost my frame of thought, okay? I forgot. Anyway, that, that's it. And I would ver, uh, urge you to vote yes.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, so we have, um, come to our last, uh, speaker card. I just wanna make sure I didn't miss anybody, okay? All right, so now we're gonna call up Mr. Sedergrin. And please, again, you know, I've, I've allowed, well, there've been made, there've been comments made while people talk and give Mr. Sedergrin some respect and let him have his say. And I'm, I'm sure this is sort of a, a nerve-wracking, uh, thing for him, but I, I understand there's, there's a lot of emotion and a lot of, uh, strong feelings about this, but please show him some respect. Mr. Sedergrin, you have the floor.
City Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager. Appreciate you guys hearing me out tonight. Uh, I know, uh, last month, we went through this and, and, uh, we decided to put it off until to month, uh, tonight. And, um, I'm hoping that, um, I can clarify some things, uh, if you guys have any questions regarding the business. I do wanna point out if, uh, Tendi, if you can actually roll it back to the floor plan of, of the business itself, there's some things that I wanna make sure people understand and know about. All the windows that are facing Mission Street are gonna be completely blocked off where no one can see inside the business at all. So any children or anyone walking by wouldn't even know that it's a gun shop, because there's gonna be no signs or anything on the outside that would tell anyone it is a gun shop. Only people that would know are the people that are legitimately going to my shop to either get repair services or to purchase something. The second part of that is there's a buzzer entry that has a camera in it. No one can get inside my business unless I physically see them on the camera and buzz them in after I have a short conversation with them. So no child can just randomly walk into the business at all, and we don't have to worry about that sort of problem happening. It also prevents, uh, other issues occurring like robbery and burglary and stuff like that. We have a couple of, of really heavy-duty gun safes that are placed in the business. After hours, when I close up, every single firearm will be placed in those gun safes. That way, it would take an enormous amount of effort and knowledge and technical ability to steal those firearms. That way, we don't have to worry about guns being let out onto the street. Out of all the, out of all the, uh, robberies and burglaries that I've, uh, looked into regarding firearms, it's always because that they're left in the display and that's easy to break with a hammer or something like that. That will not happen in my store. I was a law enforcement officer for almost ten years. I served my country proudly for eighteen years. I do not want my name or this city to have anything that would be detrimental to the health and the public welfare. That is my utmost goal, is making sure that this city is safe, besides the Police Department. I, my business is geared more towards law enforcement than it is to the civilian populace. I'm personally trying to get contracts with police departments in the counties, in the cities, on the peninsula, to service their firearms, to make sure they're safe, so when they're out in the street, making sure everyone in here is safe, that they can do that job knowing independently that that firearm will work to save someone's life or their own life. I can't implore you enough that I hope that all your questions have been answered through all of our conversations that we've had over the last couple of months. I also wanna make sure that I let people know that if you come to, you know, once every couple of months, I'm planning on having safety seminars, so that people that are afraid of firearms or that don't understand them can come to me, and I can give them a free seminar regarding that. My business, I followed all the rules that the city has requested me to follow. I've worked with the Police Department diligently to make sure that this store is probably the safest store in all of Daly City. Do you guys have any questions for me or anything like that?
Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any.
No?
When did you, uh, decide you wanted to do business in Daly City?
I was given notice, um, by the landlord in South San Francisco that, uh, the building was sold because the family that owned it, the father died, and the son took it over, and he sold the building. And the new owners wanna put a restaurant in there, which, uh, kinda put me out on the street, per se.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I wanted to come to Daly City for the simple fact that it's closer to where I live and it's closer to the community that I wanna serve.
Okay, and, um, y- your landlord spoke about the fact that, that when you had discussed with her that you wanted to do a gun shop that you had, or at least that she had spoken to the police, were you part of any of that discussion with the police?
No, this was all done behind my back, as you could say, and I had no idea that it was happening.
Okay. And as far as, uh, uh, this use permit process that you've gone through, um, was it your understanding that that was gonna be required for you?
Um, I was told that it was required, um, from the planning staff. Somehow, they requested it. Um, I kinda objected to that in the beginning because of Dick's Sporting Goods and Big Five, that they did not have to go through that same, uh, process.
And, and after, there was a, there was a process then, so then some, there was a dialogue that happened, they said that there were certain, and when I say they, it's, it's the Police Department, right? They had certain security, um, issues that you collaborated with them and spoke to them about, is that correct?
Yes, I, um, with the Planning Department and the Police Department, I actually met with both at the same time. We had a meeting and we discussed, um, all the details of the security plan that I'm gonna have in place. They took all the notes and everything, and later on, they told me, uh, or actually, they said in some, in front of the Planning Commission, that that was the best security plan that they've heard of in the entire county of San Mateo.
So were there any significant requests from staff for you to change any of the, any of the, the security between the last time you were here and now?
No.
Okay. How long you been out of business for?
Couple of months now.
All right.
And it's hurting. It's hurting a lot. My daughter's here, my wife is here. We, this income, this income that we're losing, and I feel for your loss, I really do.
Okay, come on.
Our children are gone.
I understand. Please, go ahead.
It, it hurts financially for us. I mean, I don't know, um, if everyone has a large stockpile of money in their savings account or whatever, but I surely don't. And my family and I, uh, depend on the money that I make doing what I do that is very passionate to me, that I take very great detail in doing. And I would hope that if you guys were in the same position, that you were told that you couldn't do what you loved anymore, how that would hit you.
All right. That's all, that's all I have.
Any other questions?
We can't love our children anymore.
Hearing no questions, is there any further discussion or is there a motion?
I wanna make a motion to close the public hearing first of all.
Second?
Okay.
Oh.
All right, okay. All right. Uh, any further discussion or deliberation, or is there a motion regarding this item?
Well, I move that we approve this use permit.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the, the permit. Is there a second on the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, can we get a roll call, please?
Well, can we, before we, we, we determine what the actions we're gonna take today, I'd like to hear the City Attorney's opinion on what, what would happen if this is denied and what legal recourse there would be for anyone as a result of this. 'Cause I, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with the fact that we had, that, um, we, we have use, use permit conditions on this and that didn't require a use permit. So can I, can I hear some?
If I may, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I'm, does I have a question for the City Attorney?
This is a use permit process. As you know, it is before the City Council, it's a task position that, uh, we do require a use permit for this use. Uh, in the event that the use permit is not approved, I cannot advise Mr. Sedergrin what the legal recourse would be, but, uh, he has every ability to proceed in the most appropriate way in the court system at that point.
Mr. Canepa, did you have questions?
No.
All right. So we have a motion on the table and a second. Any further discussion? If not, can we get a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
And before I vote, I would like to address the audience here. I know that there's a lot of energy in this room about safety. There is a lot of energy in this room against violence, against the wrong kind of people having guns and doing horrible acts with them. And I would challenge all of us to take that energy and put it into promoting a very rigorous gun buyback program that gets those guns that you have kind of stuck in your house. We've never, we don't have them here, we've ha, I think we had one, but to bring more of those, and we definitely need stricter restrictions and background checks, including mental health. And that's been tried all over the country. People say you, you know, we, there's access to mental health data, and it's not being used, uh, by states to limit people's access to guns. And...
Okay.
Hold on.
Let her speak, please.
You have your turn. If you look at that, the thing I think I was the most impressed with was the fact that there will be no way from people from the outside knowing what this shop does. There, it's not on the name. It's not in the...
Come on, let, let, let Ms. Christensen speak, please.
There will be no public attraction by having guns visible. There will be none there. There's no way for anyone to get into the store without being buzzed in. For me, I, I grew up in a family of guns. I don't like guns. In fact, I don't like guns at all. I don't have any guns. I don't want any guns. But I do have, in fact, I'm no fan of guns at all, but I am a very big fan of the U.S. Constitution. And it says, "We have to treat people equally under the law." And if we don't require a use permit for other stores that sell guns and ammunition, and in fact, let children walk right up into the gun department, then we cannot do this. If we wanna take this energy and have stricter use permits on gun shops in Daly City, I would be for that. And Dix and Big Five have to also comply with those laws. So I say, let's take the energy we've got here, let's move forward with a gun buyback program with stricter restrictions, including mental health checks, and let's form a, a very rigid restrictions on gun use and the use permit process, and apply it across the board. Anybody who wants to bring guns here to sell or to repair has to meet the same requirements that Mr. Sedergrin's complying with. And I vote yes.
Okay. We have, uh, go ahead.
Mr. Canepa?
No.
Mr. Gingona?
Ladies and gentlemen, please, we're, we're making the decision, go ahead.
Before I vote, I'd like to briefly be heard as well. You know, when this, this came up the last time, this was, it was taken out of order. It was, uh, it was pulled off and it was continued. And we were gonna do it without giving Mr. Sedergrin a chance to even defend himself and speak out about what he wanted to do regarding this gun shop. Um, I, I totally respect everybody in here about their opinions regarding guns. I am not a gun owner. I am not an NRA... I am not an NRA member, but I'm a second lieutenant in the State Military Reserve, which requires me to shoot a gun every now and then. I will not be using Mr. Sedegren's shop. But I, I don't want to sit here and tell you that, that other people would, I would deny them the right to do something that is legal. And that is to be able to have their guns that they bought legally, fixed legally by someone that, that knows how to fix them. I've heard law enforcement speak out here. I've not heard one law enforcement person speak out against it. I've not heard anybody say from law enforcement that this gun shop in this specific area would make this area any less safe than it is now. I live on the east side. I've lived here for 50 years. And the idea of the attractive nuisance argument about, about kids walking into a shop, I think he's, he's solved that problem. I don't think you're going to see gun shop on the front. I think it's going to see, it's going to see his name and LLC. It's not going to say guns at all. So, the, the idea of attractive nuisance, the idea of a, one of our children, and I have a 15-year-old son that lives in this town as well. One of, one of the children walking through and actually going by and looking, looking through and going, wow, why don't I walk in there and buy a gun? It's not going to happen. It doesn't make, it, it's, it's, it's beyond, it's beyond the pale of imagination that a teenager or a youth is going to walk in, is going to get past him, walk in with cash and buy a gun. They're not
Please, ladies and gentlemen.
Just
Please.
Hey, I didn't talk when you guys were talking, all right? Please.
Okay.
And hopefully, I never will. Okay. This is a very emotional issue. And the idea that it, Mr. Sedegren was not responsible for any of those losses and he's not going to be, there won't be any losses as a result of that in the future. I know I can't, I cannot predict it, but I'm telling you why I'm voting the way I am. And it's eight, number one, if we wanted to do this and we wanted to outlaw gun shops in our city, we should have done it before there was an application. Someone should have spoke up way before he came up here and said that they didn't want guns in this city. I would have loved to take on that, 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 that debate. And I would have loved to be able to tell you, stand in front of you and tell you how I felt about that debate. Unfortunately, that's not the debate we have in front of us. The debate we have in front of us is whether we're going to deny this gentleman his, his ability to make a living in this city in something that is legal or we're going to do some sort of gymnastics here and, and deny him that right. So, I would just like to say that I agree with, with Councilmember Christensen, the idea of outreach and more, more programs about the dangers of guns and gun safety. Those things are important. If this city was so bent on not wanting to have gun shops in the city, I know I would have heard about it before this gentleman came up with his application. I know I would have heard about it at the planning commission. I know I would have heard about it from my planning commissioner, Ray Satorre. He would have told me that he was against it. So, you know, regardless of, of, of the way you feel about it personally, I have this duty from the City Council perspective. And that is, I need to look at this in terms of, all right, what is the full effect? What is the effect going to be of us denying him this? The effect is going to be the effect is going to be that he'll probably end up having the shop here anyway. And we'll probably have, and open ourselves up to financial liability upon being sued in this case. So, you know, we're, we just talked about how our financial situation in this city is. And anything that opens us up to any more financial liability, such as a potential lawsuit, is just not prudent.
All right, uh, so we have
Mr. Torres.
Mr. Sedegren, you're, you're, you're a decent guy. I have nothing but the highest respect for you, but I cannot support this at this time.
Mr. Buen Ventura.
Let me just first, I want to thank everybody that has come out today and expressed your stories, your arguments, your opinions on what clearly is an important issue for the city of Daly City and our community. So, I'm grateful. I want you to also know that throughout this process, we have been receiving these letters. And we, we've got, as you could see, it's a lot of them. And we've taken it very seriously. Every time I get a letter, I forward it to all my council members. And I have read every single one of these letters and I'm sure my council members have as well. And, um, and I get letters that are very specific. I get letters that have statutes, case law. And I want you to know that I've researched those. I've looked at the cases you've cited. I've read some of the stories that you've illustrated. I've even carefully looked at the ordinances that we have on the books just to make sure I do my due diligence in coming to a decision that I make and making sure it's supported by, by the law. Tonight, you know, everything, the stories that I heard, the faces that I've seen, the enthusiasm, the passion, that's not something I could capture in, in letters and in, in looking at research books. And it, it was, it felt real to me to listen to everybody and what, what you all had to say. And I have concluded in, in all the research, the investigation I've done to talking to people and hearing out everybody, that I can't support this either.
All right, so, uh, that's, uh, that's the decision. Maybe we could take a, just a few minutes break for now. So, if you don't want to stay for the rest of the meeting, you don't have to. We're going to continue. We have still the business of the city to conduct. So, we'll take a five-minute break and come back. Thank you.